All right, Committee on Finance and Law will come to order. First, our roll call. Mr. Souza.
Present.
Mr. Fiore is present and Mr. Martin is absent. First item on the agenda is student activities. There are none reported this period. Second, we have a memo on the use of facilities. It shows various things our buildings were used for between June and the present date. Quarterly report.
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed the use of facilities report. I'll make a motion to receive and place it on file.
Chair will second that. Is there any discussion hearing? None on the table, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All those opposed, the ayes have it. Then we have a donation from PepsiCo. Books to the public libraries on behalf of the school system in the amount of $3,867. Mrs. Moynihan or Mr. Cabral, any comments on it?
I would like to say thank you. And of course, we did send a letter of appreciation to PepsiCo as they did do a fundraiser in their business for collecting the books for the Taunton Public Schools. So we do thank them and all of their workers for thinking of us. And again, all those books were distributed or are in the process of being distributed to our schools.
And of course, this is from public school libraries, excuse me. And we are in the process of getting those libraries restaffed after a period without them because of budget cuts. So we're looking forward to further use of those facilities.
Motion to accept the donation as presented.
Chair seconds with gratitude. All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All those opposed, so voted. Then memorandum from Mrs. Moynihan to the superintendent and us. Legal services for special ed for the month of September totaled $1,279.50. That's going to be approved in with the warrants, so there's no need for a separate vote on that.
Yep, that's just, I think that's just a, we've asked for this, the updates along the way here. And that's just a legal services for special ed update and receiving placed on file.
All right, the chair will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so voted. Then speaking of the warrants, we have two. There's one for fiscal year 2021 in the amount of $5,758.16. And then a second one for fiscal year 2022 in the amount of $645,759.97. Those are handily itemized, and I know Mr. Souza and myself and with our eagle eyes have seen some of them.
Yep, Mr. Chairman, I just have one question for Ms. Moynihan. Page 15, Project Lead the Way. Could you refresh my memory on that one? $4,050.
That is a program that we have in our schools, and that's for the supplies that we have. And this is for the participation and registration fees for PD for our staff to participate for training.
That's what it was. PD for staff PD. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I have no further.
What about STEM initiative?
The STEM initiative, that's what it is. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions. Motion to pay the warrants, bills payable FY '21 at the amount of $5,758.16. FY '22 bills payable warrant in the amount of $645,759.97.
All right, the chair will second that. And the chair has reviewed the warrants. Had no significant questions. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All those opposed, so voted. Then finally, we have facilities update from Mrs. Moynihan.
I'll do a quick update. Of course, we had a storm a few weeks ago caught us a little bit off guard as we did not, we woke up to no power. And then on social media, I did see that we had quite a bit of the city without power. And that jumped, started our calls of no school. And I do have to say, I don't live in the city, but I wish I did because it is a wonderful thing that TMLP is so quick to restore power throughout our city. And most of our residents were up and running midway through the storm. And we do have to say and thanking TMLP for all of their help in getting our schools up and running as we had one school still having some issues first thing in the morning. And they did race over to the school to assist us in getting our school fully up with the electrical. So we do want to thank the TMLP for restoring electricity to our cities where we did only lose one school day as other districts around us lost two to three days. So the superintendent will be sending a thank you note to the TMLP, of course, thanking them for their services and helping us restore power and getting us right back to school where all of us belong. And that is the facilities update.
And of course, one of the members of the TMLP's governing commission is one of our members.
That's right.
Mr. Martin. Your pleasure on the facilities update.
Received and placed on file.
Chair will second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, so voted. And let it take a motion to adjourn.
Before I make the motion to adjourn the Finance and Law Caucus, we're going to go right into the other meeting. And I just wanted to let everybody know before I make the motion, we're going to go right into the other meeting. Motion to adjourn the Finance and Law Subcommittee.
Chair seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, we're out of here.
Just keep us on.
Okay, call the meeting of the. Call the meeting of the School Committee to order. If you could please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early night? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care.
And roll call, Ms. Dougherty? Can she hear?
She's frozen.
Oh, Ms. Dougherty. Are you doing a.
Yes, here.
Okay. Mr. Pawlowski?
Here.
Mr. Fiore?
Present.
Mrs. Fagan is present. Mrs. Almeida?
Present.
Mr. DeMello?
Present.
Mr. Fa, Mr., I'm sorry. Mr. Martin is absent. Chairman Souza?
Present.
Mayor O'Connell?
Present.
And I'd also like to say we have a moment of silence, please. This past week, we had the funeral for Mayor Joseph L. Amaro, who was the mayor of the city of Taunton from 1978 to 81, after he had served as a chief administrative assistant to Mayor Benjamin A. Friedman. If you get a hold of his obituary, this man was not only a credit to this community and was involved in so many things, including being a veteran, being honored by the Portuguese-American Prince Henry Society, the Marion Medal from St. Anthony's Parish, and being the mayor that they said pulled the city out of financial straits, beginning his term of office with the blizzard of '78. He just really an impressive, impressive human being. And you know, his family at his funeral, and some of us were there in attendance, Mayor O'Connell, Mr. DeMello, myself, Ms. Dougherty. And to listen to just the love his family has for him and how devoted he was to all of them, as he was devoted to his community and to the people that he worked with, a very impressive legacy. And our heartfelt sympathies go out to this family. He certainly was somebody that made his community proud and his family proud. So a moment of silence for Mayor Joseph L. Amaro. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. I just want to echo the comments about Mayor Amaro. Our families knew each other for a couple of generations, and he was a giant, and we've lost a giant. I just also like, this is the first meeting after the election, I'd like to congratulate Gil Enos, Louis Lara, and Stephen Vera on becoming school committee elect members. And we had Louis Lara here a little while ago, and we have Stephen Vera, school committee elect, in the audience. And I'd just like to congratulate them and welcome them to the, to the school committee arena. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. We'll go to approval of the minutes of October 20th and November 10th. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. And now we come to the Student Advisory Committee report. Tonight, we have with us Nicole Aracella and Natalie. And I think Aracella, Aracelli, excuse me, is going to give us the report.
I'll be in order.
Hello, everyone. My name is Aracelli Alisea, and I'm a representative of the Student Advisory Committee at Taunton High School. I just wanted to say, as far as what the Student Advisory Committee is doing, we have elected our non-voting representative member, and that is going to be Nicole Drake. So round of applause. I'd also like to get into a couple of the things that Taunton High has going on as far as like our clubs and everything. Two main big things going on with clubs are DECA and STUCO. And what DECA has done is this past Sunday, we actually had a muscular dystrophy walk where they were able to raise $7,000 for people who have muscular dystrophy. So that was a wonderful thing that they did. And they also had an induction ceremony for their club last night, which also went wonderful. So that's great thanks to DECA, I guess. And then as far as student council, they've been wondering, running a wonderful spirit week this past week. We actually had, this Monday, it was, what was it? Class colors day. Tuesday was soccer mom or barbecue dad day. And then Wednesday has been neon day. And it's been a great way to kind of bring students back together after being in a COVID year and being apart and not really understanding like school culture and everything. They've also had some events going on. As far as Monday, they had a powder puff game, which was a wonderful like hit and everything. And then today, they had a dodgeball game. So that was some wonderful things that STUCO has been running. As far as, they've also had a leadership summit this past Friday where it's called C-Mask, where they were able to meet with representatives of other schools and discuss things that they have going on. As far as what the committee is doing for Taunton High, we've been trying to get more representation in our committee and like more student voices as to what we should change and what improvements we can make. And what we've been doing about that is we're trying to make a drop box where students can voice their opinions in. And we're currently in the works of logistics for that and getting that implemented. So, thank you.
Thank you, Aracelli. So some, some great things going on in that MDA walk this weekend was really nice. It was wonderful to see a lot of the different clubs in Taunton High come together to support each other, and a lot of the folks here attend as well. So great job. Okay, public input, Mr. Souza?
Public input, Madam Mayor.
Okay, capital improvement plan presentation, which I believe is Ms., oh, Mr. Cabral.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This has probably been long overdue. In part of the transition from having a new assistant superintendent for finance and operations, and then also the impact of COVID, we felt it was appropriate to revise the capital improvement plan for Taunton Public Schools. So this is the third edition, the first edition, which issued in 2014, the second edition 2017, and now we have the 2021 version. What's important to remind the school committee and also to remind the public at home is we have a great working relationship with our partners on the city side, our custodians under the supervision of assistant superintendent Moynihan, and our school principals. They do an outstanding job in making sure that our buildings and our grounds are aesthetically pleasing to receive our students and staff and the public. And working in collaboration with our building department, should anything need to be repaired or anything need to be replaced, our building department has always been responsive and always been supportive in making sure that our buildings are kept. And if there are any enhancements that are requested by the school department, Mrs. Moynihan will talk about some of those enhancements and provide you with some examples, then that is a cost that is picked up or a cost that is shared by the, by the school department. In many cases, the building department provides the labor or provides a service for such an enhancement. So again, as a school system, we've been very proud of the fact that we've always kept an eye on maintaining our facilities and having a capital improvement plan ensures that our tax dollars and our appropriation is used wisely so that we avoid costly repairs down the road and that we're not passing on costly repairs to future generations. So with that being said, I'll have assistant superintendent Moynihan walk you through the documents and explain to you, or help you understand how to read the documents that we have in place.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Cabral. So we'll just go through the capital improvement plan. And so what I would like to do is just to give a facility overview of what's going on in our district and within our buildings. So in this PowerPoint presentation, I will go ahead and discuss the district-wide protocols that we have in place, the maintenance repair log that we use, which is called Facility Dude, the maintenance of ground logs. And then also overall, what I will do is I will go ahead and discuss each of the current conditions in each of our buildings and talking about maintaining, replacing equipment, and even preventative building maintenance within our schools. So again, the district-wide protocols that we have in place is, at the beginning of the school year, we do send out a memo to all of our custodians and principals to remind them of who is, who are our city plumbers, our electricians, our building, city building superintendent. And so everybody knows who will be working in our buildings. Then we have what's called a notification process. And again, I will discuss that in a few minutes. And then emergency contact lists. When something happens in our buildings, usually the emergency contact that is, it's usually our head custodian and/or the building principal. And then they do alert me, and then of course, the superintendent, and also the city. So how do we go ahead and maintain some of our repairs in our building? So if there is a repair that needs to be done, our head custodian enters the work order in Facility Dude. And this was, this is an online ticketing system where, and all of our head custodians can add a work order. And we've been using this since 2013. So all of our head custodians do have a sign-in. They go ahead and list any of the items that are, that needs to be addressed. And then of course, the school will then notify the finance office, and I have their blank because of course, it can be either myself, the superintendent, to escalate an item. So again, if something is added into Facility Dude, which of course is something that we can record what is going on, and if it needs to be addressed quickly, what we do is they contact, they'll contact me, and I will alert building superintendent Rick Ames, and he will go ahead and identify who needs to go into our buildings. Also, maintenance of our logs where we have our groundskeepers. So our groundskeepers have a daily check-in. Every morning, I wake up to a nice text from our groundskeepers letting me know where they will be and what they will be attending to. These, and they are tracking their own log. They each have a clipboard that lists what they are doing throughout our buildings. And the first thing that they do, do is they do go into their buildings, into their assigned school, and they check in with the building principal, just in case the building principal needs something addressed in the, somewhere in the grounds. So the first school that we're going to look at is Benjamin Friedman School. So before I go and talk about each of the schools, I just want to alert you to, you'll see two boxes. The blue box is mostly about the identification of the building, the grades that are in the building, the year that it's constructed, total square footage, total acreage, students, how many students are in the building, total staffs, and also how many custodians are in each building. Then in the gray box, we'll have types of age of the equipment or parts of the, of the building, age of the exterior walls, the roof, windows, boilers, HVAC system, and of course, lastly, the electrical system. So what happened was in the last few weeks, I went ahead and worked with all the building principals, and they, of course, talking with their custodians, they identified areas of need and by priority per building. So as you will see, as we will do here, I will go through each school and listing each by priority. And then you'll see these priorities in the big packet that is also a supplement in, in your packages as well. So at Friedman, the first main priority that Principal Kurt did identify was the main entrance awning to be reconfigured. The reason being is snow, ice, and water collects right at the beginning of, right at the main entrance of the building. And of course, because of the water gathering, there can be ice, and then of course, that can be a problem when students and staff and visitors go into the building. The second area priority is the update, the intercom surveillance buzzen system. So they'd like to replace that. The other, the third one is the courtyard. They believe that there is a need to fix the drainage, and bricks need to be replaced. And the fourth one is surveillance camera enhancements. And what that could be is additional cameras, possibly in different angles. So that is the top four items that Friedman has identified. The next school is Edmund Hatch Bennett Elementary School. And you will see here that they have that blue ribbon there. And Bennett School was part of fixed or repaired through the MSBA accelerated repair project in 2014, where we were able to replace our roof and our windows and not identified in the gray box, but usually with MSBA accelerated repair projects, when you do the windows, you also do the doors. So the doors and windows plus the roof were all replaced in 2014 through the funding of the MSBA. Bennett had top three for their need priority. Resurfacing and seal coating of the front and rear parking lots. Then gym floor replacement, which is something that we have been doing throughout our building, buildings. And then again, surveillance camera enhancements. Again, that could be additional cameras or upgrading the camera system. The next school is East Taunton Elementary. Their area of need by priority, the first one is active roof leaks, which is defective due to the defective asphalt roof system resulting in significant blow-offs throughout the rooftop, leaving roof sheathing exposed. But I do have to say, working with the city building superintendent Rick Ames, they have been contacting their roofing company, and we are seeing less of those roofing shingles on the ground. And so that is definitely something that we are happy to see. The second one is an addition, a new ADA compliant playground. The playground currently in the school, in the back of the school, is an older playground. And really, there is a need to enhance the ADA compliant piece where most of the playground would be accessible by all students. The third priority at East Taunton Elementary is the requesting of an awning attached to the building or seating built with built-in canopies for students to enjoy recess in shaded areas, of course, during the warmer months. And just a side note here, the firearm, a fire alarm is currently being replaced in the school due to the water damage that we had from a, I guess it was some type of a pipe that was damaging, and it leaked into the fire alarm. Although it is still working, we are getting it replaced as we are, I think as now. The next school is the Edward F. Letty Preschool. And here, we have the top three is the intercom system needs to be installed on the offices in, in that office area on the stage. So in, on the stage at Letty, we have some small offices for some of our specialists, and they really need to hear for what any announcement is being made. They'd like to replace the basement window coverings. Currently, the basement window coverings are kind of like, they're like a plastic and very shaded, so they'd like to, to replace those windows. And then replacing the ceiling tiles in hallway and principal's office. And one note here as well, the roof, the intercom and phone system at Letty Preschool was replaced in March of 2018 due to a storm that we had that did some destruction to the building, where we moved Letty Preschool to the alternative high school. Elizabeth Pole Elementary School in central office. Their area of need by priority is, the first one is replacing their playground. Although their playground is still being used, it has, there are many broken fixtures that we now have to have the students off so they cannot use. And so they would like to replace their playground and of course, having more ADA accessible pieces for our students. They'd like to install ceiling fans in the cafeteria and in the gym. They'd like to replace correct tiles in the main lobby, install blinds in the cafeteria. One of the things for that too is because of the heat, and also it's just easier to, if you need to do some type of a presentation, it is easier to have blinds in that cafeteria. And they would like to refinish and seal coat their gymnasium. Our next school is Harold H. Galligan Elementary School. And the needs of priority for their school is, number one, is the windows, boilers, and doors. And that is currently being funded by the MSBA and the city of Taunton. So thank you, Mayor O'Connell, for doing that and approving that as we are now in the phases, the beginning phases of the MSBA accelerated repair for the windows, boilers, and doors for Galligan, which will begin next summer. The second one is a module classroom. They are at capacity. They are using every nook and cranny of that building. And due to the increase of enrollment, Principal Gannon has requested a module classroom, so we are looking into that. They'd like to seal coat their parking lot and playground area, and they would like to have the restroom enhancement on the second floor. So as I stated before, we did, Galligan is currently in the MSBA program, and they also were a part of the program in 2014. So again, this school, it has been, it is 1954, but it is getting some decent enhancements and a beautiful building it is. Hopewell Elementary School, as we all know, was closed in, in 20 June 2020. And, and there are still some level of needs at that building. But Superintendent Cabral and I will be referring the Hopewell Building to the Long Range Planning Committee to be discussed of what will be done for the building. And here we are with James L. Mulcahy Elementary School. As we all know, it was part of the MSBA core repair program where we ended up constructing a, a brand-new building in 2019 for our pre-K to four students. And where we have, this building is much larger. It's 119,700 square feet with a total of 815 students, 119 staff members, and total of five custodians. And it's a beautiful building, and we are going to be very happy to keep that building up to par. Joseph Chamberlain Elementary School is our next building, and the area of need is, first, is their active roof leaks. They're continuing to battle with their roof leaks. Again, this is something, as if we all, if we have a home or you live in an apartment, when you do have a roof leak, it's very difficult sometimes to track because water does go into many different little crevices. So we are still working with the building department and their vendor to assist in repairing the roof leaks. They'd like to replace the broken blinds within the classrooms. We have started doing them room by room, but they still have quite a few classrooms that need. that need to have repairs of their blinds. And then they like to repair the dumpster enclosure. Our next school is Joseph A. Martin Middle School. And the area of priorities here, she, the principal would like to increase the surveillance cameras, have new lockers. They'd like to replace the, of the theater lighting, and also sanding the auditorium stage. She would like to pave and stripe all of the asphalt areas. Like to convert old tennis courts to basketball courts and ice hockey rink. They'd like to update the building alarm system, and then replace the vestibule that was taken down near the bed, bandroom entrance. This building was part of the MSBA Accelerated Repair Program in 2014, where, as you see in the gray box, we had our roof replaced, and then windows, and again, as I stated, doors are replaced when we do replace the windows. So although this building is, has been constructed in nineteen seventy-six, we have been doing some updates, like just we, as Superintendent Cabral did say, we do share in, in the cost of repairing our buildings with the city. This past summer, we worked with a vendor that replaced all of our accordion-type classroom dividers, those were their walls, and we now have regular walls in these classrooms. You do now have a soundproof class, and of course, dealing with COVID and all, it's better and a more secure environment for our staff and students. John F. Parker Middle School. Again, this is a newer building, constructed in 2009, so the area of priority is very small. The first one is to install air conditioning in the library. We do hear that going throughout our buildings, as our libraries do need air conditioning due to the, of course, having the books. And then thinking about doing some type of a green space play area in front of the building, and having that something for our students to play on, and also too, for the community going forward. Taunton Alternative High School. The first priority is the inefficient heating, because it's only one zone. The second piece is the unfinished third level. Currently, it's not being used, it's be, it hasn't been used since we closed the building. And then additional parking area for staff and students. Currently, the Alternative High School has been a part of the Accelerated Repair Program of 2020, where we just replaced our roof, and we're currently replacing all of the windows in the building. And that is hopefully coming to an end soon, as we continue to battle delivery issues, but again, it's getting there. Taunton High School. So one of the things here is Taunton High School was constructed in nineteen seventy-five, but the renovation was complete of that building in 2011 and 2012, and I was a part of that renovation, and that was interesting, running a school and during a renovation. One of the top priorities of that building is security camera upgrades, in putting UV film for all exterior windows indoors. To go ahead and install, purchase and install a walk-in freezer cooler for our culinary arts program. They'd like to update the flooring in the main office areas and guidance, plus the library, remove the carpet in those three areas, and then replacing them with flooring. Then replacing all the water fountains with touchless water filling stations. Currently, all of our schools have at least one water filling station, and I am working with the Building Department now to get some quotes, so we can go ahead and possibly replace all of our water bubblers with the touchless water filling stations. They'd like to install an art spray booth with ventilation. This again, is something for the Art Department, for student work to be done. The next area that I'd like to discuss is our Athletic Department, and the first upgrade that is needed is for the athletic stadium upgrades, in the turf field, track, and scoreboard replacement. As we may know or may not know, the School Committee did go ahead and approve for us to go forward with getting this beginning of the priority of the turf field and the track to be replaced, and we are working with our vendor that has been doing some work for our district, for the Athletic Department, as we will be going forward with that as well. The second priority is a multipurpose turf practice field with lights. Third one is upgrade the softball dugouts. And the fourth one is up, outdoor seating and tables near the fieldhouse, house entrance for staff and students, and also community members when attending field events. Here are some facts about, about our Athletic Department. The league that we are currently belong to is the Hockamock League, and in fall of twenty twenty-one, we currently have cross-country football, soccer, field hockey, girls volleyball, golf, and cheerleading. Now, I did include and thank you to Sandy Altman and our Athletic Director Mark Otteviannelli to provide us with these numbers, but as you do see, the numbers do fluctuate because of COVID, but our participation has, has been increasing. And then in the winter of twenty twenty-one, we had basketball, hockey, wrestling, swimming, indoor track, and cheerleading. And then in spring of twenty twenty-two, we will be having baseball, softball, track and field, tennis, and boys volleyball, LAX, and the participation, as you see, a little bit different, because you did not have one in twenty twenty due to COVID. The next one we will discuss is the Food Services Department. Now Karen Papa has been upgrading her facilities, or all of our cafeteria kitchens throughout our district, and the first one that she is providing, feeling as it's a priority, is replacing the serving lines at Galligan. To install, a second one is install Ultra Pure Guard wall covering at Bennett, so that would finish up the entire Bennett to upgrade to their kitchen. And then continue to upgrade kitchen equipment and service lines throughout the district, and replace service lines custom-built for the high school. And those are some of your facts for the Food Services Department. They have a total of seventy-four staff members to help and provide breakfast and lunch for over seven thousand seven hundred students. Total meals served are one point three million meals. Average meal served per day is over seventy-four hundred meals. It's amazing to see that there is, they, they go ahead and make two one, twenty-six hundred breakfasts and four thousand seven hundred and ten lunches per day. And just so you know, that free and reduced lunch, we have about fifty-seven point two percent of our population. Taunton Public Schools Technology Department, their priority of need is VoIP upgrade. And if you don't know what VoIP is, and that's just that little picture of the phone, VoIP phones are going over the network, no longer using lines, telephone lines, they use technology. And that is needed at Galli, excuse me, Chamberlain, Galligan, and Bennett. Updating or upgrading surveillance cameras at the Alternative High School. Additional surveillance cameras at East Taunton Elementary, Chamberlain, Pole, Galligan, and Bennett. And then updating the door surveillance FOB system at Pole, East Taunton, Chamberlain, Galligan, Bennett, Friedman, Martin, the Alternative High School, and Letty. TPS Grounds. The first priority is resurfacing our parking lots and roadways throughout the district. We try doing that a little bit at a time each summer. I also went ahead and purchased some lining equipment last year to help having our groundskeepers being able to do some of the striping, and they will be doing that going forward on a few things. They did some out here at Pole. Curbing repair and replacement, that of course, is happening due to, you know, plowing and all, just normal maintenance. And then additional parking at Letty Preschool is definitely needed. So we currently have three groundskeepers for our entire district, and they are on a tight schedule. Each day, they report, they have their school, and so as you see, groundskeeper one will have, they have East Taunton Elementary, Martin, Parker, and at the high school. And as you see, all of the groundskeepers are at the high school, because on Fridays, they really go ahead and focus on the high school campus, because there's a lot going on there. The storekeepers, our storekeepers, they are in need of a box truck with a lift gate, which is so necessary as they do deliver items, tons of supplies, and sometimes very heavy supplies that needs to be removed from their truck. We do have one storekeeper and an assistant storekeeper, and what they do is they do mail pickup and delivery within our schools. They do some city hall pickup and deliveries. They deliver supplies to our schools, and they maintain supply inventory in our warehouse. So what are our next steps? We're going to refer this plan to the Long, Long Range Planning Committee, because of course, some of these things do need to be identified, and to see what are we going to do with some of our buildings. We're going to work with our School Committee and our Principals to identify which capital improvement projects should be short-term, which is around the FY twenty-three, and which need to be long-term. So we'll be working with them, again, School Committees and Principals, to identify all of those. So, all the items that I did just refer to have now been put into that big plan, and I'm not going to go through that big plan, but I do want to just show you one page in the plan, so you can just see how it is referenced in the booklet. So again, part of your School Committee packet, you will see the very large Capital Improvement Plan Status Report, and this was updated again just this, just this year or this month. As you see here, we go ahead and identify everything by, it's all in alphabetical order, and you'll see the first one. So we'll just look at here, it says school, Taunton High School, the Athletic Departments. And you will see one of thirteen. So there are thirteen items that are listed for the high school Athletic Department. And throughout, you will see the summary of need and issue. So you'll see there, it'll say football stadium, press box, it'll tell you a little bit about what is needed. The estimated completion date, sometimes you will have a date, and sometimes you'll just see the TBD. An estimated cost, how do I get these estimated costs? Some of them have been there, others have been, that we requested our vendors for quotes. And then the funding source, is it going to be the Building Department? Is it going to be the School Department? Is it going to be something shade, shared together? And then you will see that recommended priority rating, and that's a color system. Red is priority one, which is high, yellow, which is medium priority, which is two, and then green, which is low priority, and that is low is number three. And then you'll see, if any of the projects listed, you'll see completed, like right there in front of us, on the, on our screen, you will see there, two of thirteen, the tennis court reconstruction and fencing, as we do have some brand-new tennis courts at Taunton High School. So all of the items that were in the presentation today, identified by the Principals, are now a part of this plan. So the plan has been updated with the addition of all the items that were presented per school, and now are in the plan. So I hope I brought some idea of what's been going on in our buildings, and again, it is a team effort. I could not do this alone, as I have quite a bit of people helping me, and I can't think enough as that city, because there are many times they don't want to hear from me, as I'm asking them to do more, but I do appreciate their help.
Thank you, Ms. Moynihan, for that comprehensive overview. Mr. Souza has a comment or a question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I, I, over the years, this, Ms. Moynihan's been in this position, and I think also, too, the previous holder of that position, your position, as well, started this capital improvement booklet, and it's, it really encapsulates everything that we're doing, and what, what we've done, but more importantly, what we, what we need to do down the road. And I think the taxpayers should really, really know that this really means a lot to all of us in upgrading for our students. I just have three comments, question and comments. First of all, on the facilities, at the athletic facilities, there was one omission, and that was commented on the practice field with the ledge, which is the Williams Street area, but we didn't, we also forgot the multipurpose softball field, multipurpose. So as someone that's been pushed for the baseball field and pushed, and now we'd like to get that multipurpose softball field in over there at that little area, then that's been designated for that, so be happy to see that back on the list. And also too, during the athletics, I didn't notice that gymnast, totally side, so side comment, gymnastics, I didn't see gymnastics on that list of the athletics. We still have gymnastics, right?
I, yes, we do, and I do apologize that I did not have that on there. So yes, we do have gymnastics.
Just curious.
Yes.
I guess I either have a good memory or a soft spot for gymnastics, I'm not sure which, but.
We'll say a good memory.
And finally, the servant line at the, at the high school, so that's probably about, I, did that get taken care of during the renovation? So is it, we're upgrading it, or we're, we're enhancing it?
Well, because of, again, and I'll, I'll confirm it also with Karen Papa, our Food Service Director, it is a custom, it needs to be custom-built because of the way that it is, but there will be some enhancements, but other parts will be custom-built upgrades.
Just, just basically upgrades to make it more accessible and more useful and things like that?
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, yield.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for this report. I'm glad to see that the Mulcahy School doesn't have any areas of needs. Let's start there. But more on a serious note, I, I think what I, what I, I, I did, a lot of information here, and I really appreciate that, is health and safety of students, faculty, and staff. So I, I'd like to, like, have that rise to the top. I, I saw one concern with the roof at the East Taunton Elementary School, and things flying off, or whatever that may be, blow-offs throughout the, the rooftop, leaving roof sheathing exposed. And, you know, it's not so much, you know, getting rain on someone's head, but, you know, the, the, the issues of stuff blowing off the roof and hitting a student on the head, or a faculty, or a staff member. So I, I think if we can address this at a level of the health and safety of our folks, first, students, of course, and faculty and staff, I think that should rise to the, to the top, and this, all this is important, believe me, all this is important, I agree with everything that's here, but if we could just have that come to the top, so we can identify that on a little bit clearer basis, so we could hit the ground running with that, I think that's what I'd like to see. So not to minimize anything that's on here, but I think the health and safety is, is number one. Thank you so much.
And I, and if I could too, there, there, there has been substantial amount of work at that building, and we are not seeing that anymore, and again, that's only happening when we have high winds, so we wouldn't have our students out there as well, but I can assure you that that will be addressed as well, and I'll alert that to the Building Department, too.
You're welcome. Mr. Pulowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was wondering, were there any items that maybe didn't make the list, but were considered particularly around air conditioning in any of the schools? And in asking this question, obviously concerned with, you know, air circulation for, you know, viruses and all that, but also like, of cour, of cour, of course, in the hot months, air conditioning. It was brought to my attention by a number of families and staff members of the need of air conditioning in certain areas in Taunton High School, particularly the weight room and some of the fieldhouse areas, so was any of that discussed?
Well, one of the things, first of all, on your first comment about the health and safety, and, and if you can recall way back in the midst of the pandemic, we did test all of our classes to confirm that if they did not have a four-point-oh exchange rate per hour, we went ahead and we added air purifiers in the classroom. So on that, that has been addressed, and we continue to work with the city HVAC to replace our filters, to making sure that our classrooms have that done. Also, a reminder too, we've updated our unit ventilators at Martin and also at Bennett, where you had those older pieces, and that was used by city funds as well, their COVID funds, and they replaced that last year. So that has been addressed, that health and safety. The air conditioning, the thing is, is, and we hear this all the time, our air, our buildings are old, and these buildings were not constructed to have air conditioning. So when you are air, like you're seeing a lot of these air conditioners in our buildings and there, in the windows, at times, it's a problem where you have to have, our city electricians have to add circuits, and have to add many different things, it's not that easy. So we are seeing that to be a problem throughout our district, and not just through our district, throughout the Commonwealth, because you're hearing that everywhere. We have added air conditioning in, at the, in the fieldhouse area where the coaches rooms are, but I can look into the weight room and all of that, and seeing if something that we could pipe in if it's not fully air-conditioned, but I'll look into that as well. But again, our buildings aren't constructed to do that, and that is going to be an issue.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Cabral?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I, I just want to compliment Mrs. Moynihan for the.
So I just want to compliment Mrs. Moynihan for the third edition of the Capital Improvement Plan. I also think would be appropriate to recognize Wendy Devine, Donna Binns, and Anne Zrebrick for the support in helping to compile these documents, because as Mr. DeMello said, it is very comprehensive, and it does take a team to put those packets together in a manner that we feel is professional and represents the hard work that takes place in the district. So thank you to all those individuals, and thank you to Brenda for putting together this plan, because it's something that's been long overdue, so now you can, we can put that behind us and commit to getting the work done. Thank you.
Mrs. Dougherty, did you have a question or a comment?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. Can first apologize for not being with my colleagues there. As luck would have it, the legislature has just adjourned, so had they done so an hour ago, I would be there. So I have a couple of questions. One is to thank Mrs. Moynihan for the very thorough report. Much appreciated. My questions are pretty simple. There are three or four of them. One of them has to do, and the superintendent's just left his seat, but nonetheless, the water stations. Three or four years ago, we made a commitment to place the water stations in every school building with more water stations at the high school, given the size of the high school. So I'm wondering what action has been taken to do that? Do all of our school buildings have a water station?
Yes, every one of our buildings have at least one water station, and so now that every building has one water filling station, now we would like to go ahead and start replacing all of our water bubblers with water filling stations.
Okay, thank you. Second question is that I'm, I'm curious about the comment under the Taunton Alternative High School about the third floor. I was under the impression that renovation in the third floor was underway. We have had multiple conversations about the fact that there's elevator access, the new electricity system is also available on the third floor. So would you just update us on third floor?
Actually, I had a meeting with Dalahatung this morning after I met with several students on another matter, and part of the discussion was to turn that into a CVTE project to provide the committee, provide myself, with information on what that space would look like if it was converted into classroom space or if it was converted into office space. So that is work that our students will undertake. However, we cannot safely allow our students into the space until the renovation is complete. So that work will be done once the renovation is complete through our high school students, and I will share that information with the committee, as I want to explore both opportunities for office space. Should we consider relocating central office or classroom space? Should we consider expanding specialized programs or expanding, for example, should we consider expanding the Taunton Alternative High School to have additional components?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Just, the Subcommittee on Facilities Planning made two significant recommendations, two years ago, I guess, and Mr. DeMello, who is the chair, can more cogently speak to the recommendations for the expansion of the ROTC facility and also the expansion of the music facility. Could you talk about that a little bit, please?
Yeah, I'd be happy to comment on that. So that was part of Long Range Planning Committee. We explored two possibilities of an accelerated repair slash core SOI, Statement of Interest to the MSBA, to put in addition of maybe a steel frame space in the maintenance lot, which is, which runs behind the fieldhouse. We also discussed the possibility of an addition or expansion of the high school where Tiger Den used to have a facility or a dining area outdoors, which is somewhat of a courtyard for the high school. But I believe realistically, and again, I may be wrong, but without conducting a feasibility study, I believe that would be something that would probably be best addressed through an accelerated repair project. But again, that is something that we would have to discuss with the city, because I don't believe the school department could fund that type of project on its own. That would be something we'd have to do with support of the city and, and with support of the MSBA. And we know the MSBA, they do provide a very thorough analysis. They analyze enrollment, they analyze programming needs before determining if a program will be accepted. So I believe that's where we left that discussion was.
Yeah, thank you very much. Certainly, it is in a long-range plan, but even two years ago, in conversations with both the ROTC folks and the music and the coral and instrumental departments, that you know very well, that spaces, that we have outgrown the space in both instances, where I fear that we would limit the numbers of students who would participate, given that we just don't have enough space to accommodate all of our wonderful programs in that regard. And just lastly, just to follow up on Mr. Palowski's question about air conditioning, and I heard your response, Mrs. Moynihan, but we need to be very cognizant, and I'm sure that everyone in the room is, about climate change and the heat that we are anticipating, the increase in the temperature that we are anticipating over the next months and years. So I think considering ways in which we can mitigate excessive heat. This year, as you all know, the Department of Education gave schools an opportunity to close if they needed to because of the excessive heat. So we just need to be cognizant of that and begin to think of ways in which to mitigate the impact on our students and, of course, on our staff. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for your indulgence. I appreciate that very much.
You're welcome. Okay, looks like we're all set now?
Yep.
All right, we will move on to the superintendent's reflection.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So in your packet, I provided you with the summary of my 2020, 2021 reflection. Before I get into my reflection, I also did reflect on the feedback that I received last year during my last evaluation. And there were six items that the school committee made recommendations or made suggestions as items or areas that I could improve or that the district could approve upon under my leadership. And I can proudly respond that of the six items, five have been addressed during the course of last, the last school year. So the first item that was addressed was the strategic plan. We did implement a strategic plan, and as I noted last year, it is a living document that we will continue to revisit. As a matter of fact, 22 administrators will be revisiting the strategic plan this Friday during one of many three-hour workshops. One of the suggestions was to be more critical or more forward-thinking with, when opportunities present themselves, to do some restructuring within our organization. That example was presented with the Human Resource Department to attrition. We were able to restructure the Human Resource Department and make it more efficient without a significant increase to our budget, so I'm proud of that work. And we also have a new opportunity with the hiring of the new special education, or the appointment of the new Special Education Director to look at the Special Education Department and look for opportunities, again, to be more efficient or to be, or to maximize the resource. And one of the things that I have implored the Human Resource Department to do and my department heads is when a vacancy does present itself, to not be so quick to fill it right away. We want to make sure that we learn and look at the position and think about how we can utilize that resource differently, or do we keep the resource the way it is? So that is a strategy that we've been using and we've been very successful with. I was encouraged to have a stronger presence at the state level, so I can proudly state that I have done this through testimony that I provided at the Board of Education. I serve on several committees as a superintendent in Southeastern Massachusetts, a representative of the urban superintendents, and also a representative of MASSS, doing work around diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I'm also part of an advocacy group that is leading much-needed change regarding entrance criteria for students entering vocational schools. We also talked about ways to utilize our grants, to make sure that our grants are sustainable or that positions that we bring on through our grants are sustainable, so I believe we've done that through the planning process. We streamlined our hiring process, so we are able to hire staff in a more efficient manner. The one area that Mr. Barado and I continue to work on and is a work in progress this year, so I hope to have some positive feedback, is developing a long-range professional development plan. So of the six items, we've made progress on five, and we are making progress on the sixth this year. As Mr. Souza will discuss later on in the meeting, you may notice that my reflection has four standards versus six, because in 2019, DESI did revise the superintendent evaluation tool. So for the first standard, which is the educational leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by cultivating a shared vision, it makes powerful teaching and learning the central focus of schooling. So this falls under standard one, instructional leadership. I just want to highlight and mention some of the work that I know you will, you will read and provide commentary on based on Mr. Souza's directions. So I'm very proud of the work that we did to have three plans prior to the start of the school year, a remote plan, a hybrid plan, and an in-person plan. I do believe that the school system, last year, we made the correct decision to begin the year remotely and to phase in our hybrid plan. Despite criticism, I believe this best prepared our students and best prepared our staff. Should we have to pivot or go full remote, we implemented the most difficult learning model first. Therefore, I believe the rest of the school year flowed, flowed at a better rates or at a better flow, least disruptive rate, because we learned the most difficult learning model out of the gate while providing staff and students ample time to become very familiar with the different platforms and different strategies that they were asked to use during remote, hybrid, or in-person instruction, where they had students in person and students at home. With the support of the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, we partnered with Modern Teacher, who provided professional development and how to deliver instruction using those different models. We also provided our staff with a library of high-quality pre-K through 12 digital resources that are aligned with the state standards. We partnered with Florida Virtual School, Edgenuity, and we also worked with Looney Math to provide our staff with supports as well as professional development. The district, meanwhile, while all this was going on, we were still piloting and implementing high-quality instructional materials. We implemented a new pre-K through 12 ELA curriculum, which is Wonders and Study Sync. We also transitioned, Wonders and Study Sync proved to be advantageous at the time because it provided our staff with digital resources, not knowing that digital resources would be the way of the land last year. And we also implemented the new, in addition to the new ELA curriculum, we also piloted Open Said, we also piloted Illusitive Math, and we also piloted a social-emotional learning curriculum titled Mind Up throughout the 2020, 2021 school year. I'm also very proud of the fact that we provided all our staff members with Social Justice Professional Development Series on a monthly basis using our Professional Development Wednesdays. The professional development was very well received. We had over 800 staff members attending per session regularly, and our principals, central office staff, also benefited greatly from the support received from the statewide system of support team. We also made sure that we were analyzing and assessing our students throughout the school year. So just because we were in shutdown or we were in remote, we did provide, we did have formative and summative assessments utilizing the various tools and the various programs we have in district. And we also, through impact bargaining, the district adjusted the educator evaluation system and timelines and expectations to ensure that all teachers were evaluated, and I also evaluated our principals. All our principals completed a leadership summary review, which I utilized to complete the 2020, 2021 evaluation. Standard two, which is management and operations, again, just want to comment how we addressed or achieved this goal. The Taunton Public Schools did, did implement a strategic plan. Our strategic plan has four buckets, which focus on curriculum, instruction, assessment, and planning, professional culture and climate, management, budget, and operations, family engagement, and community partnerships. The Taunton Strategic Plan is different than the previous strategic plan, as it includes a mission statement, a vision statement, as well as a theory of action. We also completed a 43-page reopening plan that was also, that was used by some districts as a model, which was a plan that I shared with other school systems. We also did take a significant step forward in reorganizing our Human Resource Department with a minimal impact on the budget. I won't get into all the detail, as many of you remember the countless hours of impact bargaining our plan, but we did successfully bargain our reopening plan. We did successfully bargain our return to in-person learning plan with our teachers' unions. I'm also proud to state that we did not have any grievances that made it past my level, so that demonstrates that we have a sound working relationship with all our unions. And I was also pleased to learn that the Department of Labor complaint that was filed against the Taunton School Department was removed, and I also do believe that we would have prevailed had that case moved forward. So we do have a strong working relationship with all our teaching, with all our teaching unions, in working unions. We have strong fiscal reporting practices. We, based on the request of this committee, we now provide you with a quarterly report on our grants, and we also provide you with a monthly update on how the special education legal costs and what's being charged and why we are incurring those charges. And we also did provide, seek input from the public when developing, developing our budget. And at the building level, our teachers and our administrators work collaboratively to develop those school budgets. I'm proud to state that Mrs. Moynihan and the business office, again, on the end of the report, had zero findings. And again, working with the school committee and working with our principals, I find our budget workshops to be very thoughtful, to be very engaging, but also to be very transparent. And last but not least, I'm proud of the work that we did to create a ESER spending fund. So this is a document that we will use for the next three to four years to address the needs as we navigate ourselves out of this pandemic. In closing, regarding this particular standard, I'm very proud of the fact that we utilized our COVID grants to support what I call our crisis learning plans and to make our schools safe and to make sure that we had the appropriate PPE on hand. I'm proud that we ended the school year with $4.5 million in the revolving account, which will position us well to replace the turf field and potentially address other facility issues. Because we were fiscally responsible, we were able to prepay the first quarter out of district tuition, which is allowable in the Massachusetts general law, while also being able to pre-buy our school supplies as well as our custodian cleaning supplies. So overall, I thought we had a very strong year when it came to fiscal management. On the family and community engagement, standard three, we discovered that we received, we had greater engagement with our families through Zoom, whether it was CPAC meetings or PTO meetings. Now, the hardship or the burden of having to transport families and children to attend meetings was alleviated due to Zoom. So that is a practice that we will utilize in a hybrid model moving forward. I'm also proud of the work that we've done to increase our social media footprint. So on Facebook, as of now, we have over 3,600 followers, on Twitter, 2,500 followers, and on Instagram, 1,400 followers. So that is something that I believe is very important moving forward, knowing that social media sometimes doesn't always cast a positive light on certain aspects of our school system. I want to make sure that Taunton Public Schools remains at the forefront and that the public gets a true account of the amazing work taking place in our school systems as our, our school system, as our students alluded to earlier. And also, I continue to work with our families to provide them with written communication as well as public service announcements, which is something that we will continue to do this school year. We have provided our staff with professional development and social-emotional learning, diversity, equity, and inclusion through partnerships with Bristol County Savings Bank, so we have great resources in our community. And we, through our networking, by attending various breakfasts, various lunches, various opportunities, inviting the public to the Tiger Den, we are able to network and create new partners to support the school system, which is something I believe is very important for the overall well-being of our school department. Mental health and social-emotional needs of our students and families, that continues to be at the forefront. We have great working relationships through community counseling of Bristol County, the Family Resource Center, Manit Health continues to be an outstanding partner, the Juvenile Clerk-Majesty, and Children's Advocacy Center. They've all provided us with professional development. I'm very proud of the most recent professional development that took place last year and professional development that's taken place this year through the Children's Advocacy Center. Last year, all our administrators during our retreat participated in a workshop on signs of child abuse, and we are slowly but surely rolling out that professional development at the building level to all our teachers, and that is something that will be part of our ongoing professional development on a yearly basis. I'm also proud of the work that we have done as a board. Now, this board, we've had to issue some critical communications promptly, and I try to work with all the board members in using the modality that you are most familiar with or most comfortable with. Some of you prefer texts, some of you prefer phone calls, some of you prefer face-to-face interaction, and I just. And I just want to make sure that the committee knows that I will do whatever it takes to work around your schedule, change my schedule to make sure that you receive the time that you are, that you need, whether it's office hours during the week, whether it's office hours on a Saturday. I want to make sure that I can make myself accessible, accessible to you and also give you some insight into work that I'm participating in and also give you insight into future work through my weekly updates, which I share with you on Friday or sometime during the weekend. And for standard four, which is professional culture, I provided you with a list of items that I feel address professional culture in the district. I, I hope that you understand that I set a high expectation for myself. I like to lead by example, and the example that I set is the example I expect from the leadership team all the way down to our principals, to our staff, and to our students. The work that I'm probably proudest of when it comes to professional culture is having high-quality instructional materials in front of our students and in the hands of our educators. So making sure that all our teachers have high-quality instructional materials across all our schools and all our grades ensures that whether a student transfers from one building to another, they're going to have access or they're going to be using the same quality materials. It's not going to be materials that teachers or that certain departments or certain schools are compiling without supervision or without being vetted by curate or by ed reports. And I'm also proud of the work that the English Language Learner Department, being a former ELL student, it's, I am proud of the work, and that's a program that I continue to visit on a regular basis because I want to make sure that all our learners, whether they are EL, English Language learners, special education students, or whether you're an AP student, that you are receiving a quality education and getting the individual attention that you need to be successful. I also want to just highlight that through communication, we had our communication task force last year and our family outreach task force, they did some tremendous work throughout the COVID pandemic. And last but not least, I believe that our greatest strength as a district is our collaborative nature. From the leadership team down to our principals, we have worked hard to align our practices pre-K through 12. Our principals have a voice in developing meeting agendas. This is a, this has a powerful impact on our work in, in developing or building buy-in. I also believe that this leads to more shared leadership throughout our schools and departments. We see more schools establishing teams, again, teams, not individuals, to drive meaningful change that will impact teaching and learning. And I also believe that shared leadership will improve the overall culture and climate throughout our school system. So I just want to state that what I've shared with you cannot be attributed to one person. It is really a team that is behind all this work. I can only take so much credit based on the work of these individuals and the commitment of these individuals. So if you have any questions between now and I believe December 2nd or December 1st, please feel free to reach out. I'd be more than happy to clarify or provide additional backup. And if you have any questions regarding any of the materials or any of the responses that I provided you, I'd be happy to entertain any questions at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Cabral. Okay, looks like we can move on to administrative business, staffing report. Can I get a motion to receive and place on file?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none opposed, so voted. Thank you. Subcommittee reports, Finance and Law Subcommittee, Mr. Fiore.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I begin my report, first of all, I'd like to apologize to anybody in the audience who may have been offended that I didn't stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody here knows I'm recuperating from surgery for a foot infection, and I have to minimize the amount of weight I put on my foot.
Of course.
With regard to Finance and Law Committee, met this evening with myself and Mr. Sousa. There are no student activities reported for expenditure on this warrant. We received a use of facilities report from Mrs. Moynihan. There was a donation that we accepted from PepsiCo, the food corporation, in the amount of $3,867 for books provided to our school libraries, which is great that we're getting that additional material as we're getting ready to restap the libraries. Also, we received a memorandum that Special Education Legal Services for the month of September were invoiced at $1,279.50. We were presented with bills payable warrants from fiscal year '21 of $5,758.16 and fiscal year '22 of $645,759.97. And finally, we received a facilities update from Mrs. Moynihan where she took stock of difficulties that the school system had as a result of the major windstorm we had in late October. She was grateful to the TMLP that even with extensive power losses, we only had to close, close schools for a day and asked that the, the system specifically thanked the TMLP for its outstanding service. As a lot of other citizens have, I've seen on social media and from, from other contacts, we're very, very grateful to our local lighting plant. And that is our report after we adjourn.
Motion to accept the report and adopt the recommendations, the Finance and Law Subcommittee.
Motion made and seconded on discussion, Mrs. Fagan.
Could I ask to be noted as present on invoice number 16958765 on page six?
Did you get that, Wendy?
So noted. Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions. Since Professor Lavelle is brought up quite a bit by the superintendent, and we know how critical it is, on page 11, I'm sorry. Okay, sorry. On page 11, there's a vendor by the name of Looney Susan, a total amount of $25,500. This is just a one-time professional development session? Is this multiple?
This is multiple. Susan Looney does provide professional development as a consultant to our district for math.
Okay, so it's over the, is this, there's a period involved here? Is this?
Yes, this is for September PD.
The month of September.
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
We do receive regular invoices from her on our warrants.
Okay, great. Thank you. And one more item, on page 12, Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed, we're paying them $3,339.80. Glean grant. What exactly is that, please?
It was a grant that we received some funding for, and I believe if I could give to Assistant Superintendent Barata where he can provide a little bit more information about the Glean grant and why we are reversing.
Sure. So we try to take advantage of any available money that DESI provides us, and part of our work was looking at the Glean grant, which provided a planning opportunity to either, one, purchase new materials, which we already had done with Wonders and Study Sync, or two, some specific plan or targeted area of need. Our need, which we could actually discuss at the next school committee meeting around ELA, was looking at improving our writing scores. So we utilized that grant to examine our writing practices in the district and come up with a strategic plan on how to address those areas of improvement. The difficulty in that was the priority of that grant really went for the purchasing materials versus planning of some type of action step within the district. As a result, we had a planning team come together, made up of myself, Becky Coet, Sarah Buckley, Sharon Dorian, and others to develop this plan. We were able to charge stipends to do that work. That was part of the plan, the grant. However, we did not exhaust the entire grant because, one, I find that's inappropriate for me to take it because that's part of my job. Mrs. Buckley also found it as part of her job where she felt like she couldn't fairly take advantage of the funding and such, along with other administrators saying, well, this is what we do. So once we secured the grant, we had to turn back some of that money. So we, we erred on the side of ethics versus spending down a grant, and as a result, we turned back that money, a portion of it.
Okay. Thank, thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. So there's a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none opposed, so voted. Committee of the whole meeting, Mr. Sousa.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The committee of the whole, the Taunton School Committee, met today, November 17th at five, a little after 5:00 PM, and the, one item on the agenda was to interview the candidate recommended by the superintendent for the position of Director of Special Education, and that, that person was Mrs. Amy Moynihan. And the committee asked many questions, and after the questions were, were asked, there was a brief discussion, and a motion was made by Mrs. DeMello, seconded by Mr. Fagan, to approve the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint Mrs. Amy Moynihan, the Director of Special Education. On a roll call vote, there was seven in the, excuse me, there was five in the affirmative and one present, and that is the report of the committee of the whole.
Is there a motion to accept?
It was Mrs. Fagan, not Mr. Fagan.
Did I say Mr. Fagan?
He's on the committee of the whole.
But he'll be honored to know he was a temporary member.
He'll be honored to know that he was talked about tonight. That was Mrs. Fagan that made the second. I can tell as the night gets later and later, right? There's a motion.
Information, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mrs. Almeida.
Point of information, that needs to be, that needs to be voted on in the meeting because you can't, the votes in committee of the whole don't count. If it was a special meeting, it would be different. So we need to vote on Mrs. Moynihan in open session.
On the, we need a motion to adopt, approve the report and adopt the recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Opposed?
Roll call. Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mrs. Almeida, you said a roll call, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Dougherty, it's an aye. Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mr. Fiore?
Present.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
Chairman Sousa.
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. Fagan.
The vote is six in the affirmative, one present. Motion passes. Moving on to new business, school committee appoint, well, we just did that, school.
Yeah, so that, that item there, we, we did that in the committee of the whole, and we just, we just approved it.
Yes. So we will go to food services. Mr. Cabral.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we provided the school committee with this item on the new business food service composite materials feasibility analysis. I believe this is something that was sent to Mr. DeMello's attention, so we are recommending that this be referred to Long Range Planning and School Property Subcommittee for further investigation.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded on discussion, Mr. DeMello.
Yeah, it was brought to your attention by me, but started with Mr. Palowski. Thank you.
You're welcome. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none opposed, so voted. Next is New England School Development Council and SERPED study.
I believe this came out of our last meeting where we were talking about the increased visibility of new developments popping up throughout the city of Taunton. So I asked Mrs. Moynihan to reach out to NESDEC and to the Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District, SERPED, to provide us with costs should the committee, and we'll provide this analysis or this cost analysis to the committee. We want to make sure that the committee has the costs associated with doing a, a study on our population as well as the potential study should we need to redistrict, depending on where the homes are being developed or where the developments are popping up in the community that will have an impact on certain schools. So I will provide that information. I know it could be done or has been done in the past, but I also know in the past, the school system has received reports from NESDEC and from SERPED, and they do provide that, they do provide that service. So that's something that we'll come back to the committee with, should that be something that the committee wishes the administration to explore.
Mr. Sousa?
So are we getting a price on the cost?
Yes, the prices.
That's what we're going to get? Okay. So do we need a motion?
No action?
Any action on that? You're going to just do it? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Number four, election of student advisory committee member as a non-voting member.
I believe that's a moot point as our student council reps announced today.
So, so the election was, was, the election took place at the high school, and she was here this evening, had a very nice conversation with the young lady, and that was Nicole Drake was elected to student advisory council representative to the school committee, and then she had two backups, Alyssa.
Aricella.
Aricella Alaseya, and then Natalie, hold on, I got my cheat sheet right here, Natalie Duncan. So the three of them will be coming to the meeting, and Nicole will be the main speaker.
Okay.
And the representative, she can, she's a non-voting member, she can ask questions just like any one of us.
Excellent.
So, Madam?
Yes, sorry, Mrs. Dougherty.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes, Mrs. Dougherty, please.
Yes, I have a question, well, just a comment. I want to be sure that Nicole, and congratulations, Nicole, is the person who sits at the table for the duration of the meeting and is presented with the packet as the school committee members are presented with the packet in order for her to participate as she chooses to participate. So I, she was in the room this evening, I believe, so was it clear, made clear to her that her role is to be the person who sits at the table with the school committee and for the duration of the meeting?
So I'll, so I'll yield to the superintendent, he, on, on some of that, but I just want to be clear that I had a very lengthy discussion with her about her role and the ability of her to talk and the ability of what she had to do, and that was made very clear. And as any high school student that has the workload that some of these seniors do, she asked me if she could leave tonight, and I said, you leave when you have to leave. And so Mr. Cabral will answer the rest of, the second part of the, the rest of that question.
So I'm sorry, I didn't hear a word that you said, Mr. Sousa. You were all garbled.
So what Mr. Sousa stated is that the, who was it? I can't think of it.
Nicole Drake.
Thank you. Nicole Drake, she is, she is well aware that she is the non-voting member, and she is also aware that she can stay throughout the entire meeting. And I've also encouraged her colleagues, her classmates, to attend with her as well, and they, they plan on attending with her. And personally, the more students together, but Nicole will be the non-voting priority member who was elected at the high school. I also need to commend Principal Holcomb for assisting the committee, assisting myself with this charge. Mrs. Devine has provided the advisory, or the advisor, Jason Torres, with school committee packets, so the students are receiving school committee packets with, along with the school committee. So I believe that answers your questions, or was there a third part to your question, Mrs. Dougherty?
I just, yes, just to restate that it is in the spirit of the law that the young person participates in the meeting as an equal member without voting rights and can attend executive committee meeting, executive session meetings at the will of the body. Just, and I understand that she would have a backup in the event that she can't attend. That really is the backup, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Dougherty. From what I'm hearing, they are well aware of that, and the students had to leave this evening due to other commitments and homework and things like that. So it was their choice to leave this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to superintendent's evaluation.
Colleagues, at the December 21st, excuse me, the December 1st meeting, I just want you, I just, I have a statement to read, and everyone knows the process that's, that's been here. So in your packet, you have a letter from me. On Wednesday, November 17th, today, we will be discussing the process for, for the 2020, 2021 evaluation of the superintendent of schools, which will be conducted at a televised Taunton School Committee meeting on December the 1st, 2021. As you know, under Massachusetts general law, the superintendent of schools is the only public school employee required to be evaluated in open session. I have provided you with a copy of the evaluation tool, which is updated on July 2019. There are six categories under the previous tool. There are six categories under the previous tool, relationship with the school committee, instructional leadership, management and operations, budget management, professional culture, and family and community partnerships. Unlike the previous tool, the updated evaluation tool will be reduced to four standards, instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. Please be advised that you do not need to complete the evaluation tool at this time or the evaluation tool that was provided. I am distributing the evaluation tool now to inform all school committee members of the process well in advance of the superintendent's evaluation. The superintendent will provide each school committee member with a hard copy of his self-evaluation in advance of the meeting. At the December 1st, 2021 meeting, you shall come prepared to share your thoughts on the four, four areas of responsibility. Please be aware that if you bring a completed evaluation form to the table, it could become, it could be considered part of the public record under the open meeting law. As has been the past practice, we will be working on a consensus evaluation that represents the majority views. Here is what you can expect at the December 1st, 2021 meeting. Number one, the chair will give an overview of the process. Number two, as a group, we will discuss each of the four categories. Number three, as a group, for each category, we will discuss each expectation, determine an overall rating, exemplary, proficient, needs improvement, or unsatisfactory. Four, the school committee secretary will take notes and create one comprehensive evaluation. The individuals, excuse me, five, this individual will collaborate with the Taunton School Committee Chairperson and the Taunton School Committee Secretary, me and Mrs. Fagan, and a final draft will be submitted to the Taunton School Committee for review and final approval. Please see the attached evaluation rubric and the superintendent's self-evaluation template. So after the December 1st meeting, Ms. Devine and the other ladies in the central office will take the minutes of the meeting from the video, I'm, excuse me, the audio, compile the comments, provide them to me, Mrs. Fagan, and me and Mrs. Fagan will be meeting the beginning of the week of the 6th with Mrs. Devine, and we will go over all of the notes, and we will compile a single evaluation of all of your comments and all of the notes, from all of your comments, and then we will present that to be approved as the final consensus evaluation on December the 15th. And that will be the process.
Thank you, Mr. Souza.
Thank you.
Everyone all set? Okay. Unfinished business, school committee.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, Mrs. Almeida.
Thank you. Have a question. How did the evaluation forms change from six to four without the committee approving the change?
So because, I have a simple question, excuse me, a simple answer, because the evaluation rubrics was, was determined by the state, and they changed the formula, so we had to, we, we cannot deviate from state law, so we had to change our rubric, the rubric had to change automatically with, to the state law.
So why wasn't it brought to the committee before that so we could vote on the new change?
Because it was just, it was just brought on by the state this past year.
Good question. Thank you, Mrs.
I mean, whatever you want, it doesn't matter. Okay.
But what they did was they consolidated basically the six, they consolidated the four, but it's the same areas. They didn't eliminate anything, they just consolidated it down to four, but it was the six. I mean, eventually, it will.
Do you understand how hard we worked to make that rubric the way that it was? And to just arbitrarily change it and tell us that it's changed? I don't think it's, it's a fair evaluation because we've always done it that other way, and not that we always have to continue to do it, but we should have been told ahead of time so we could have looked at it and been able to vote on that that was the change. But that's okay, you can do it. It doesn't matter. No problem.
If I could just comment as the person who's being evaluated, the, the four standards versus the six standards, the four standards do encompass or do take into account the six standards. The biggest change, based on my opinion, is relationship with the school committee. But that is, that is also incorporated into the various standards. And based on my research, when I was looking at the new tool and preparing for my evaluation or my reflection, it was probably, it probably made sense back in 2019 to bring this to the attention of the committee, but the tool that you used before with the six standards was identical to what DESI was utilizing, so I thought it would make sense to utilize the four standards based on what is current on DESI. It's four standards, and the four standards do take into account to the six standards. So I do think you will be evaluating me based on the old model, but just over four standards versus six.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral.
So when did it get changed, though?
I believe it was towards the beginning of the 2019, 2020 school year.
2019 and 2021?
It was the beginning of the pandemic, beginning of the full pandemic year.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. DeMello, you all set?
Yeah, no, Mayor. Thank you. So I'm just curious, so it states here, as has been our past practice, the consensus is the majority's views, through you, Mayor, to the superintendent, how do other districts do it?
Other districts, through, well, I can already speak to urbans and to the coalitions that I belong to, they utilize the state rubric, which you have in front of you.
Right, but I'm just saying, referring to the, as been our past practice, we will be working on a consensus evaluation that represents the majority views, right?
Correct.
So is that how other districts do it also?
Yes.
In your best knowledge?
Yes, and if you look on, I believe there's a FAQ on page.
You don't have to get deep, I'm just saying, is that standard throughout most of the urban districts?
Yes.
Okay.
And you'll see on page three, I think it's question three or four, it does say that you can use an aggregated score.
Right, can, but I'm just saying, is it, is it normal practice in other districts?
Yes.
That's similar to ours? Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
We're all set.
You love your mommy.
Okay, next is action item review.
Oh, school committee recognition.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me, thank you. School committee recognition, Mr. Cabral.
Just an update that due to the storm, we have rescheduled the school committee recognition for December 8, 2021. That'll be held in the high school cafeteria. Mrs. Devine and I will be notifying our principals as a reminder, and if any school board members aren't able to attend, please notify Mrs., Mrs. Devine, but we look forward to seeing everyone December 8th at the high school cafeteria.
Thank you. Now, action item review.
I don't, I don't see any that have to change, colleagues. Does anyone see anything that, right now? I think the, I think really all of those will stay on. The third one, that I think will go to the new rules Subcommittee when that term starts at the beginning of the year. So I think we're good with that. Anyone see anything different?
Okay. All right. Moving on. I do not see the press here this evening.
Motion to adjourn.
You have a second.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Nice job, everyone.